Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank all of you for attending this afternoon's City Council work session. We're gonna go ahead and get started. It's 5:30. On 8/18, we had a 5:30 PM budget hearing with the mayor and department heads. Lasted a little over two hours. The mayor presented his proposed budget the following night, Tuesday, 19, at our City Council meeting. This work session was called on that night, giving all council members, citizens, an opportunity to get any questions, concerns answered by their counselor or counselors, questions answered by the mayor or the administration. I hope all council members have done so. I do hope, whether you agree or disagree with the budget, when we have concluded the process, we can each vote our convictions and pass a 2015 City of Prattville budget on time. With that being said, we will begin with each council person, one through seven, with me concluding to ask any questions or state any concerns that they have. I am aware that council member will not be present and one may be leaving shortly. Feel free to depart as necessary. With that being said, we'll start with Counselor Striplin.
Thank you. First, express appreciation to all of those involved in generating this booklet. Huge amount of work and effort to put all these numbers on these pages and very helpful information. I only have a few areas of concern that I would like to point out. The first area relates to the funding for the library. This is a city agency and not a community initiative. I'm told that there initially was a $5,000 increase suggested. And when I was asked about this, I mentioned that that was not enough to cover the health insurance increase cost that they were getting. A revision of $20,000 was then reconsidered. And then, somewhere during the discussion, it was reported the library was seeking a $5,000 grant. They are continually seeking grants. But it may have been a coincidence, but the amount ended up in the budget at $15,000. Any additional funding would help the library, as this agency is in a city building. It seemed that if at all possible, that the city could assist with offering maybe janitorial services to help save the library some out-of-pocket cash expenditures. My final thoughts on this matter is that if the city's willing to budget and spend $18,500 for a 35-minute fireworks show that's seen by 10,000 to 12,000 people, shouldn't we be willing to appropriately fund our public library that accommodated 159,000 guests last year? The second area of concern that I've got is that relating to the allocation from the lodging tax. It was my understanding that last year, three entities were participating and percentage of the proposed tax revenue was shared with the city keeping a material percentage. The plan last year had caps, which were closely approximating the percentage of the total projected revenue. This year, the percentages in the budget are stated as the same from last year, with the exception of the Chamber of Commerce, which has increased by 1%, and I support that. And their 26% is a true 26% of the proposed lodging tax to be received. However, the other two are being held to the same dollar cap they had last year. But the percentages say it's a percent of the total pool. Because these projected amounts have grown by approximately $104,600, 10% of the pool this year would be greater than 10% last year. What's been proposed effectively is a percentage cut. Though it's my understanding that percentages were initiated as an incentive to those organizations to help support economic development and tourism. This is their incentive to help keep funding growth here. Bottom line to me is eliminating an incentive is the same as penalizing these organizations for being successful. The third area I would like to bring up is, many of you know that I support the concept of enterprise fund accounting. Briefly, my reasons for supporting it are: Number one, the department manager is not only responsible for managing expenses, but also responsible for managing income. Number two, departments are not forced to spend all their budget at the end of the year just to prove they need the money. Unfortunately, it's a reality that virtually all budget makers immediately look and see what was not spent in the prior year and then see if cuts can be made in the current year. In my opinion, departments should be rewarded for not spending all their budget dollars. But conventional wisdom says, cut them next year if they don't spend it this year. The third area there is that, under the enterprise system, departments can keep any operational efficiency they generate. Your hard work and that of your staff that generates into dollar savings can be retained by your department and not returned to the general fund. For these reasons, I'd like for the city to consider putting both parks and recreation and cultural arts into enterprise funds. And if not officially putting them into funds, adopting the enterprise concept of providing accounting reports as if they were in an enterprise fund. And that's all.
Thank you. Mayor, did you have any comments at this time? Only a little, you'll wait to the end?
I'd like to go ahead and comment on this. Thank you. Okay, I'm sort of gonna work backwards, I guess, on the enterprise fund. And I appreciate your comments on that. I know whenever I initially introduced the enterprise fund concept, it was sort of a difficult sell. And so I'm very grateful that you had bought into it. And I really do see a lot of benefit with the enterprise fund and wish we could really have all of our departments in there, because it's... Well, I do disagree with some of your comment where the... Some of the departments, when they haven't spent, they have been cut. I don't think that's... I don't quite agree with your comment on that. I mean, it's... The budgets are always a very difficult time, because we do have a limited pot pot of money to pull our funding from, and there's so many various needs in so many of the various departments. We've gotten behind in our capital at one point in time, and we're slowly but surely building up. And I think there's been a... I think the departments, the finance director over here has really bought into the fact that we got to have our capital equipment rolling in on a steady, steady routine. And we're trying to get back to the point where we need to be on that. We're not there yet, but we're definitely making a lot of progress in that. As far as our parks and wrecks going into an enterprise fund type account, I don't think that we can ever get it to that point, because of... We do charge for some of the... We have fees associated for some of the structures, or the functions, or the programs that are charged. If we were actually charged for what they actually cost the citizens, I think that it would pretty much be pricing itself out of business. I did some research a couple of years ago. I did not... We were not able to converse since our budget work session... I'm sorry, budget hearing session. But my research from a couple of years ago have actually shown that there's... I don't think there's any parks and wrecks in the state of Alabama. I did not look outside of the state of Alabama. They're actually self-sufficient. It is a quality of life program that will, I don't think, ever cover its cost. Now, it does provide a long-term benefit, 'cause I know at one point in time, I actually had one group that told me we need to get rid of our parks and wrecks, because we can't afford them. And my comment to them at that time was, well, we might as well just increase the police department's funding that much more, or maybe even more, because the quality of life for keeping our kids busy, helping them understand social skills and everything else. There's more of a residual effect and pretty much an untangible outcome of our parks and wrecks that you cannot always put a dollar amount on. But we have been working toward having individual budgets inside of the parks and wrecks budget, as far as our... Just for a few examples, if we Stanley Jensen or the Doster Center, or Newton Park. So that way, some of the entities that are actually utilizing them know exactly and it'd be actually helpful accounting for us to know exactly what is spent in Stanley Jensen or the other structures that I happen to mention. So that way, when we do have the schools, or the civic groups, or whatever they might happen to be, then they know exactly what their tax dollars are being paid for and really what kind of great deal that they're actually getting for the use of that. But as we all know here, you know, there's a lot of uses from so many different groups here in the city of Prattville that are paying pretty much very little or nothing at all to utilize those. So if we were to go in here, it'd be definitely a culture change if we're gonna have all of them. As a matter of fact, I think there'd have to be a resolution change about our high school utilizing the stadium at no charge on that. But there's... There'd have to be a culture change to help everybody understand that. But we have been working with the Board of Education to actually help them to pay for some funding or some of their usage of, for example, Stanley Jensen. But hopefully, we do get to that point, and with council approval, the funding dollars that come from the Board of Ed, for example, if that does happen, will stay toward this function of repairs or improvements of... They're gonna stay with Stanley Jensen, or whatever structure it might happen to be. So there's definitely a lot more changes in the future for our Parks and Wrecks Department. But for it to come strictly off of lodging taxes, or just the fees to cover all their costs, I don't see that probably ever happening. Matter of fact, I think the Parks and Wrecks Director did a little quick check of like cities, mutual cities like Prattville. And I think our Parks and Wrecks Department is about 25% of some of the other cities in that survey. About roughly correct on that. If you don't mind, how about get that information to the council, so that way they'll know exactly how your department is funded compared to other like cities on it. The lodging tax on that, you know, the cap that was on the Chamber of Commerce last year, this current year, it has been taken off. But, you know, that is an incentive for them to actually work to try to bring more programs in, working theoretically closer with city staff, whether it's Teresa Lee out of my office, in the downtown director's role there, or Kelly Cook in her function as Parks and Wrecks Director, Urban Management, Devin Peake. So, I mean, there's so many areas that they actually potentially work together on, whether it's financial, or physical, or just mental thoughts and ideas. You know, that is one of the thoughts there. I don't think the city actually has that same relationship with the Airport Authority. And I think the other one entitled to that is HPRA. Is there another one I'm maybe missing out on?
LPGA.
LPGA, okay. Okay, but it's pretty much a flat. Right, right. But, you know, as far as seeing the fees go up with these other ones, I'm... Again, the power is, you know, with the council over here. But I do see the value with the chamber having that incentive. I don't know that... I see the value with some other ones there. Now, I do have some other thoughts and ideas. I know you mentioned the library and comparing it to the fireworks. You know, the fireworks sort of comes around in a cycle. The community has stepped forward for usually, as the cycle runs, two or three years at a time. And then the city steps in for two or three years and actually helps fund that. Yeah, I think that's a worthwhile quality of life program that if so, C-FIT, you know, you can't cut that. I think it is a burden on the local businesses, if they go further than that two- or three-year cycle, to come in with donations and everything else. But somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think three years ago, the city paid $0. I think two years ago, the city paid $0. I think last year, the city did pay not the full amount, but most of it, the large majority of it. But, so I think it's sort of a partnership, not only with the local businesses of Prattville, but, you know, we're looking for any kind of partnership in any shape, form, or fashion there. With the library, I think that, as you mentioned, they are a form by the city. I think there are possibility or some other ways that we can work with them. I think some tabulations were done that, you know, normally if that building had been rented out, it'd be somewhere around $5,000 to $8,000 a month. Hand me up, Mr. Devin. The city usually spends about $10,000 a year in the grounds area as far as the cutting and maintenance and other stuff. Seven to 10? Seven, 10, so somewhere in there. So there's a lot of in-kind services that the city has done. I know we're trying to get a working program with them, so that with the work, the major, major issues that need to be looked at, which are normally your HVAC, your roof. If they call city staff, then we will come over and look. I don't think that we ought to be looking at some of the little things for them, because we actually have no control of that building. And they can probably argue that, because the city did provide a lot of funding for new HVAC system that has been... That is sort of controlled through computer system by the city. And I'm actually looking to see how much that might cost for us to change that over to them. But I do have some other thoughts and ideas as far as the library that I wasn't able to get with you earlier and was able to share with some other counselors and the finance director. And to me, the library is a part of education. And I've spoken heavily about economic development. And a part of economic development, and I spoke in the Hub Wheel process. That is parks and wrecks. That is urban management. That is the vehicle maintenance. That is our public works, I'm sorry, environmental works, which is wastewater and sanitation, our public safety back over here, our general government. So all of these are very, very important, and education is also a portion of that. So I do take them as a very important part of that economic development group. And so I'm looking out for them each and every way that we can. Any more funding that the councils, City Council can provide, I most certainly would appreciate it, 'cause I know we have several departments over here that probably feel like that they have been... That they could do a better and more efficient job if they are provided with more funding. But I don't know if that answers your questions or not, but if any other... After this meeting, if you want to talk further, I make myself available.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Striplin, for being prompt with your questions. Thank you, Mayor. That was a hint. We do appreciate... I'm sure at the end of this work session that you are making notes and that you can continue to work on anything that we've asked at the end. So we'll move forward with Counselor Brown.
Most of my questions have been answered prior to the meeting, 'cause they're just clarification questions. But I'll echo Albert's, you know, endorsement of the library, us doing what we can for the library. Just the ability for people to look for jobs there is something that is not provided anywhere else in our city. And I also look at it as a quality of life program for people that are not job seekers, you know, for families and that sort of thing. The only constituent that I had, and it wasn't one of mine, but the only person that brought me questions was concerned about the funding for the library. So, and it wasn't a library... I did... I was contacted by the board, but it was just a general citizen who compared it to other libraries and other cities and, you know, spoke to how important it is. So I'll just echo that. My other question is, do we currently have a centralized ordering system for basic office supplies? I know that when I first toured, when I first came on council, the fire department was looking at some of that. I just wondered, 'cause I saw, you know, different departments, some with substantial jumps in office supplies, which everybody has to have, but I just wondered if we had gone to that, or where that is. No?
We have not gone to central purchasing yet. That was... The concept did come up a couple of years ago, and we're really trying to find a good fit. And that might fit somewhere between Public Works, or City Clerk's Office, or maybe the mayor's office. It's real hard to say on that. If I might just have 10 seconds to touch back on the $15,000 increase in the library and was discussing about the 20. Well, the, I guess, the difference came in there is that I had found a $5,000 grant, which was included in that bump from 15 to 20. And I just have to apologize, I just didn't market it well enough on that one. But they do have additional $20,000 if they apply for that grant through a local company here.
Thank you, councilors, chancellors.
Did the... I too have been contacted by folks, including the board, about the library and think that we need to double back and look at that. Did they submit an official request? Do you know what that number was? What was... They asked for an increase of 35? Okay. One thing that comes to my mind is, on the enterprise funds, I'll admit that my first thought was not as positive as it has turned out to be. I thought there was... I'll give props to the wastewater department. They really, and the sanitation as well, have really taken ownership. And that surprised me. I really liked that. I do, and Mayor, you and I have had these discussions before about, you know, some departments, you just can't do that in that same way. I'm wondering, though, if there's some quasi-type way to do it. And the thought that I had, as you all were talking, was maybe it's appropriated similar to what it is now. But then, throughout the year, when the department can come up with savings and different ways of doing things and more efficient, then that money could stay in the department in a savings account, if you will. Doug, pardon me for my slang on financial matters. But that money, and I think you'd have to be careful with that, because I think that money should only be used for capital-type issues. You start funding operational through savings, and you really can get into some problems. But maybe there's some quasi there, so that when departments do come up with ways to save, it does advantage them down the road. They get a little bit better piece of equipment that they haven't been able to get, or, you know, whatever. So Doug, maybe that's something that you could see if there are any quasi. You can't do it 100% like we do wastewater and sanitation. It just... The numbers just don't work. So you've gotta figure out some way to get the same benefit, but it's gotta be structured a little bit differently. So, anyway, I've been very, very pleased with the enterprise funds and the way all that's worked and the way you gentlemen have really responded to those. That's been really neat. I've always wondered how we could do that, and that's been a good way to do that. So, one other question that I've gotten, obviously because of the proposed health insurance cost, and I should have asked you this ahead of time, Lisa or Doug. Is there some accounting or some information that you could provide to me or us that we can just look through that and just see what the status is, what the costs are, and some justification, just to help me understand that a little bit better? So... I can get this later, too, but I would like... Or Albert, if you wouldn't mind, would you repeat those percentages again that you read off for the lodging fee that you mentioned a minute ago?
The chamber was 26. The Airport Authority is 10. And the HPRA is 15. And then there was a flat dollar amount for the LPGA. My recollection from last year was it was not a percentage, but the city retained... Last year, roughly 50% of the balance was retained by the city and not allocated, if memory is correct on that. And out of that, any LPGA from last year was... The fund was used for that, because it truly is economic development. And that is, that's part of the concept, I believe. I support that.
And Albert, I believe the rest was supposed to go in a reserve account? Or just in a general account, just in a general account?
But I think there were efforts made to boost a reserve or economic development last year, when there's some funds transferred over to industrial.
It's $100,000, if I remember right. Yeah, there was some original money and then some other monies later, yeah. The only other area that I had, or just wanted to make a statement about is the Smith Center. And just going back to the difficult times and the cuts that they have, that they endured, I've been approached, and I'm actually on the board of the Smith Center, too, and they just provide an invaluable service to our community. And I would ask mayor and fellow councilors if that's something that we could look at. They're at 2,500 now, and they were at 17,500 back in 2010. So they've, obviously, with a lot of other people, but had been cut. But they have... They provide a true, truly valuable service. And again, I'm on the board there, so that one is close to me. And I see the tremendous, tremendous need that they have there. So those are the questions and comments that I have.
Thank you, councilors, chancellors. I'm gonna go ahead and make my comments, and then if Mayor got any closing comments. First of all, let me thank the department heads, all you all for what you've done. And thank the council members again for meeting diligently with your committees during this process. Not only during this process, but during the year. You've actively been engaged and been involved. The items that all of you have brought to our attention tonight, I'm sure the administration has heard it. I too have been contacted by the library. I believe it's something that we can look at, go back and reevaluate. I, I believe it's something that we can look at, go back and reevaluate. One of the things I want to ask and make sure I'm clear on, Mayor, when it comes to the lodging tax, a one percent increase for the chamber this year does not mean that that increase will keep going up. Am I correct?
Talking about a percentage-wise?
Percentage-wise, yes.
It's, that's sort of led up to so many different, different factors and everything else. You know, the, as we all know, the, the chamber is under a contract for services and
I'm looking here, so they're, they're, they're the only one that's not capped, or the rest of these capped on these percentages?
Yes.
The rest of them are capped. But anyway, we, we should look at everything that's been said here. All in all, I think we've got a, a good budget. One of the things that I want to warn and caution us about, caution us about is that things change quickly. We've seen that in the past. So we have to still pay close attention. I applaud you for having Mayor Rayzes back in this year and a two percent coal being in there. At some point, you know, that may not be able to take place, but it is taking place now and I applaud you for it. I would like to see all the department heads along with this administration, and I've stated it from the diocesan one of our previous meetings. In the future, try to have all capped items purchased by the end of July, if possible. Budget process as well on the way and if that's possible, try to do that. Give us a little more room to work with knowing that everything's out the way. I really don't have a whole lot of other comments concerning this. I think we can work on the items that we talked about here tonight and I'll allow you to make some final comments if you like.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the enterprise funds and, and the special revenue fund accounts and which is judicial, is under a special revenue fund account. And I think that time will tell exactly how well that is progressing. Again, I'm very proud that three years ago, I was really having to do a lot of marketing and selling to the, to the council and, and other people about the positive effects of an enterprise fund. I thought, I think I remember some newspaper articles and everything else talked about it. It could just be, just a way to go up on fees. But the, I've still been looking to see every way that we could to, to dedicate certain funding for different departments. And if it's, I'll be working closely with the finance director to see if there's any additional ways. I'm glad to, to hear the council is being, looking forward on that because I do see a lot of the benefits to allow the department heads to be able to, to actually manage their money and, and manage their departments. And so some very positive comments there. The other one, and, and, you know, Smith Center was brought up and then the, the library and, and the Airport Authority, you know, all of these are, are very important and useful areas. But one thing I do need to caution the council is, I think at one time, and help me out, Mr. Mosley, I think at one time in a lot of our community initiatives there, wasn't it somewhere around a million and a half dollars that we were paying out, which whenever we went through our financial situation, we had to do a lot of drastic cuts. Some went completely unfunded, some have, you know, were drastically reduced. But as we go down this path, I can, you can rest assured that you're going to have more and more coming in for more and more of these community initiatives and they all very much are, are needed. But also our department heads, our employees, our, we are a mechanized, service-oriented organization. We've got to have the people and we've got to have the equipment. We're not quite where we need to be yet on all that. So I do caution the council to be very careful with these community initiatives. There's, there's a lot of needs out there outside of the group, the city, the organization called the city of Prattville. So if you guys can make the adjustments that you see fit, but the, this group that you see here in front of you, I don't know that a one of them has come to me and said, oh no, that's too much money in my budget. I don't think that there's a one. I know there's several that need more people. There's, every one of them, I think, can have, needing new equipment and I do want to applaud them also. I think we have been making a lot of improvements through technology. We've been making a lot of improvements through good old hard work, not only from them, but through this council. And so I do appreciate everything that has happened over the last three years. That said, if there's any other questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any other questions. Look forward to getting adjustment, whatever adjustments that we have to make, as I said earlier, to have this budget passed and passed in time. I don't think there are a lot of complications or amendments that need to take place. The councilors that were present presented their case. You can take those cases back and readjust or talk to those council members. But I do ask that we have a budget in place to pass in time. I think we will. Appreciate it.
And again, one thing I did want to mention, I, we actually had to make an adjustment on the nine-one-one funding for it. There had been a difference in the calculations there. So we'll find in the, the proposed budget that's online to actually have a different number there.
Up, down?
Their, their numbers went up and it got brought out of, I think it was a community initiative or whatever line it was and, and it got split up underneath the police and the fire department. And I think the thirty-something thousand that went up actually came out of the industrial improvement park account. We had actually went up, I think, forty thousand on it, but we brought it back down roughly thirty thousand.
Okay. With that being said, we are finished. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate again everything that you do. Thank you.